We're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, can we skip to the budget later?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Ah, well, they're gonna do roll call, uh, make sure the mics and see if anybody's online and all that.
So again, board members, please say here, um, if you're here, both in person or online. Wendy?
Here.
Kristin, uh, did say she was gonna be absent. She had sent me an email. Uh, David G?
Here.
Um, Annie?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Christine? Not at this time. Leslie? Not at this time. Uh, Patricia?
Here.
It's time, Sean?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Kelty had told us she was not gonna be able to make it tonight. David T? Not here. Uh, Abigail?
Here.
Ann Wyatt?
Here.
And I don't mean to put Christine on the spot. Can you just say here?
Here.
Thank you. All right.
All right. So it has been requested by some folks who are at parent teacher conference that we move an item out of order, which is citizens' comments. So in order to move the agenda around and need to have a vote, I vote for motion to make that happen, I guess.
I move to move citizens' comments to before budget workshop. Are we doing it after?
Yes, we're seven. I'd probably say after. Yeah, I would say after.
Motion to move agenda item number three to agenda item number seven.
Haven't been moved in second and, uh, discussion? All right, call for vote.
All righty, Wendy?
Yes.
Um, David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Excuse me, Rebecca?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And then Abigail?
Yes.
Ann Wyatt?
Yes.
So the motion passes unanimously.
All right, we'll move it up to seven. It becomes seven after budget workshop. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. I'm sure those folks appreciate that. Um, additions, adjustments to the agenda by board or superintendent?
I do not have anything.
Sean, I have a question about that.
Yes, go ahead.
We received some information on the survey. Is that something we would add to the agenda to discuss? Or is that an executive session thing? Or do we not discuss that?
I would say...
I have some questions about follow-up to the survey.
If it's about follow-up, I would say we can add that. But if it's about individuals or job performance, that's not something we're gonna talk about.
It is 100% not about individuals or job performance?
I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely not. No. In fact, I just wanna say, I think that would be completely inappropriate. Hands down.
Yep, no, I didn't, wasn't testing. That's where you were going, but I wanted to make sure.
Nope, not at all.
So we can add that if we're ready?
I don't have that with me tonight, so it would be really hard for me to respond.
Yeah, then...
So we can add it to a future?
Well, add it to a future. Yeah, that's completely fine.
Thanks, Christine.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, anything else from anyone else? All right, seeing nothing else. I just wanted to add, um, about a couple of our student board members. I was able to see one play hockey on her senior nights, probably. And it was a really great game. And I was actually able to watch Wyatt online, someone posted a video. And, um, so I think we have a couple of really great athletes on the board. And I wanted to point that out, and I felt fortunate that I could watch them both do their stuff. So I hope it was a great end of the season for both of you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, action items and for approval of the minutes of February 7th, 2024.
I move we approve minutes of February 7th, 2024.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second and, uh, call for vote.
There is nobody online who can do a show.
Showing hands, yeah. Show hands.
All those in favor?
Yeah. All right. Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, two extensions.
And that was because you guys weren't here. Thank you.
All right, consideration of requests for leave of absence through June 2024, Terry Allen.
Uh, motion to approve leave of absence for Terry Allen effective through June 12th, 2024.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second, discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? It looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, consideration of requests for leave of absence through June 2024, Crystal Johnson.
And I just wanna note before anyone makes a motion that Crystal actually works in Mount Vernon. Um, so we have the corrected one in your folders, just so that you guys know. Apologies on placing her in the wrong school.
Um, I move to approve the leave of absence for Mount Vernon Elementary School, Ed Tech, Crystal Johnson, through June 30th, 2024, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Looks unanimous. Nope. Uh, policy second readings?
Yes.
I just have a question, Owen, on the expense authorization?
Can we do a motion?
Sure. Yep.
All right, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve policies E B C E, school closing and cancellation, and D K C, expense authorization and reimbursement, is read.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second and discussion?
I just had a question on D K C. Is there ever a time when someone would need to, like, immediately pay for something? Where it wouldn't have time to get approved?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Um, it should go through the process, though, because our auditors are not gonna like this when we do something bad.
Okay, I was just curious.
Is that safe to say, Mandy, that that's highly frowned upon?
Correct.
Any more, uh, discussion?
So just so the board knows, um, if it's okay, the, we did draft an expense reimbursement procedure, um, and we've been getting feedback on it. Um, and the policy committee has seen that. And I got one suggestion for an update on the procedure, which you guys don't have to vote on. But we will definitely do that. It was around baggage fees for airlines, which have jumped up recently. So we probably need to take into that into account, too. So we will do that. But I just wanted everyone to know there is a procedure that goes along with that.
Great, especially if you fly for a day or two. I did last week. I think I paid more for the bags. I learned that the hard way. Um, all right, haven't been moved in second. Any more discussion? All right, great, we'll call for a vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Acceptance of bid for sale of obsolete 20, I mean, yeah, 2007 Bluebird bus.
I move the acceptance of the bid for sale of obsolete 2007 Bluebird bus.
Second.
Haven't been moved in second and discussion?
Can I make an amendment? Can I add all three of those into one vote?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good move. I knew, yeah, I said we could do that.
So my amendment would read as follow. I move to accept the bids for the sale of the 2007 Bluebird bus in the amount of 887.75. Um, the bid for the sale of the 2008 GMC van in the amount of 375.75, and the purchase of the 2005 Skidoo snowmobile in the amount of 8300. That's right.
Second.
2015.
2015?
Yeah, 2005. Mr. DeRozan wants to be right.
Same concept.
Yeah, I know, I know. Haven't been moved in second and, and then thanks for that. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Christine.
What are we doing with the Skidoo? Who's getting...
So, if you want to, step up to the mic.
I will say that I need to give full credit to Mandy and Jay for this, actually, because, um, I've been coaching for a long time. And, um, historically, every time I would ask the superintendents for money to buy a groomer for the ski trails, they would say, "We don't have that kind of money. We can't put that in the budget." And so for years, when we needed one, we would fundraise for it and buy it. In this last round, we fundraised, but we didn't get enough to buy the new groomer, the thing that goes in the back and the snowmobile. So I found one on Facebook Marketplace and bought it myself. Um, and I didn't go through the proper approval channels. Jay and Mandy noticed that, and they said, "Here, you need to go through this approval process, and then we can buy it from you, and it'll be the schools instead of you buying it." And also, they let me know about, that none of the previous superintendents had told me about, that you can do a lease purchase, and we will put some money into the school budget, so you don't have to fundraise for that whole thing. So it was very much, it was stressful momentarily for me, but also super good in the long run. So thanks to them.
Thanks for taking care of it, and thanks for answering the question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Brian, go ahead.
Just had a question about how we bid out vehicles. And where, where do we put those out to bid? Just in a newspaper, online, gov deals?
Well, do, um, a lot of times, there are people that are usually connected, and those are the people that will see it either online. Sometimes we do put them in the paper. It just kinda depends on what we're looking for. Um, a lot of the, um, the dealerships also, um, will pick that up as well. So it just kinda depends on what it is we're looking for. Uh, but they're always on, they're always on our website, for sure.
The obsolete ones go on Craigslist.
Oh, that's what we do.
Ryan, you?
Yeah, it just, it just seemed like an awfully low amount for a school bus that somebody will drive to the scrapyard to hold their money. So good on them, follow the policy. I'm all for it.
Or they fill it with interesting stuff. I've spent a long time driving on old May, that's a... All right, anything else, anybody? All right, we will, uh, call for a vote, all those in favor? Okay, it looks like unanimous. Anyone opposed? We're good. All right, we, before we move into the budget workshop, I had a note from Donna here, and I think that meant she wanted me to remind folks. Only four board members and eight admin have filled out the completed Jay's evaluation, and that is due by 3/4, so please do that. Thanks. Now we can move into budget workshop.
So, um, we've got a, just a couple of quick presentations tonight on, um, multilingual learners, uh, the ELL program, as well as gifted and talented and technology. Um, Dr. Smith, are you okay to do ELL and? And we have a slideshow we'll throw up there, too, so... This is probably the easiest tool you're going to see. No, we don't need to do that. We can just move ahead.
So first up is the multilingual learner budget. Um, there's no increase, no changes for the FY '25 budget. Uh, you can read, um, the current FTEs, ours is 1.5. Um, we recommend continuing with that, given that, um, that one individual services all six schools in the district, K through 12. Um, it really does depend on the number of students who qualify for the services, um, and our numbers are staying steady, um, as they did last year. And the gifted and talented, um, the number of students is limited to 10% of the student population. That stays consistent from year to year. Um, the staffing, therefore, will continue to remain the same. Uh, we have 2.3 FTEs dedicated, um, for that, uh, K through 12. So again, no recommended changes, um, to that budget. And that's it.
Wow.
It's pretty easy.
So Diane's going to, uh, come up next.
I just have a few things to take with me since I'm running the show and presenting. All right, so, uh, move on to... So I'm, I, I'm taking the opportunity today to talk about, um, technology in the district, as well as how it, uh, how it's going to affect our budget this year. So I've been working really hard on, um, re-doing our tech plan. Um, during COVID, it sort of expired, and now we're really looking into what is it that we need to do and really, um, strengthening our, uh, technology department and how it interacts with teaching and learning. If you know anything about my years here as a tech director, I ground almost every single decision in teaching and learning, um, and how does that support it? So I just have, like, this role of a tech director, and, you know, what does it mean to be an effective tech director? It's managing the technical support. It's creating cohesion, so we have a unified technology plan that serves the purpose in education. It's faculty training and empowering educators with effective tech use through training and ongoing support. It's adaptability. It's staying updated on tech trends and, um, evolving landscapes like ChatGPT and AI and cybersecurity. And there's always something coming up that really, um, requires a lot of attention and growth, and things change all the time. So, um, as we're talking about our tech plan, this is not in stone yet, but I wanted to... Give you a taste. I just wanted to give a taste of where we're going with the tech plan. And I have three main goals. The first is around students. So providing students with vetted and aligned technology tools and resources that support purposeful, equitable access to learning opportunities that enhance learning. So that's talking about, you know, having personal learning devices for all students, K through 12. We have that, and we wanted to continue to support that. It's providing tools and resources aligned to the district instructional programs. We've been working really hard with the curriculum director, um, and really making some very purposeful choices in the kinds of curriculum and instruction, um, you know, supports that align with what we're doing in our classrooms. Um, supporting learning management systems, K-12. So we have Google Classroom from 6 through 12, and then we have Seesaw Learning. That's the K through 5. Um, and we're evaluating our resources for usage. And, like, we can see on these online programs who's using them, how much growth we're making with things. So we're looking at the data to make these decisions. Um, and then we're maintaining, um, district, the district technology help support, which is tech support, um, through our, our Gmail system. And that applies to students and really, like, keeping the learning going in the classroom. Then our next goal is really providing, that's, this is about teachers and staff, with the resources and the training needed to support collaborative, student-centered learning environments with high-quality instruction for each, every student. So that's really providing, you know, the equipment for them so that they're able to, to teach their students in a way that's very effective and utilizes all the online resources that we've been purchasing. Um, that we're providing the, you know, the professional development that helps them to feel successful for that and maintaining internal knowledge base for training and support that promotes technology-supported, student-centered learning. So those are all, you know, parts of things, and you'll see in the pictures, um, you know, some teachers really exploring new technology that we're getting out to classrooms. And I'll talk more about that after. And then the last goal is really implementing and maintaining, you know, the, and optimizing the systems and processes and infrastructure that effectively and efficiently support the learning goals of, and the health of the district. So that's all of our backbone stuff. That's the network. That's all the cybersecurity stuff that we're doing. It's, um, you know, maintain, keeping the spam out of all of everyone's mailboxes. Um, it's, uh, maintaining data privacy and keeping our students safe from, you know, a lot of the, um, online things that are going on right now. Um, it's also maintaining a robust asset management system to track devices for students, staff, school, and departments, and track repairs, updates, and replacements. So it's really taking care of all the things that we're purchasing and making sure that it's all running properly. And then the last thing is really to develop a plan so that we have a way to sustain all of this. So support is vital to the success of technology at our school. We, as a tech department, are committed to offering ongoing support to all staff and students in all areas of technology. Um, so we meet monthly. We look at trends, projects, past needs, review tech support requests, um, and really just, um, keep track of what's going on. And how tech support sort of works is, um, the teachers can email, or any staff member can email techsupport.com, uh, techsupport@maranacook.com. It goes to an email that's shared with everyone on the team. And we sort of divvy it up. Like, there's, um, tech integration specialists that will take any kind of tech support that is more with teaching and learning. And then I have my IT manager, who takes anything that's network-related. Can't get on this website, can't get on, you know, those types of things. And then, um, I have some just-in-time support people out there. Um, some techs that are strategically put in, um, the different schools that can help with this student has, um, is not able to get into this, um, computer program, and somebody right there can go and help with that. And so that just-in-time kind of support is out there. And then allow, uh, this also allows us to see trends. For example, last fall, Apple did an update on their Apple TVs that caused havoc with our network and how the Apple TVs were working. And just by monitoring tech support, I could see, you got a problem here. And then now we're really mobilizing on what's the solution? How are we gonna fix this? And getting the whole team together to provide the kind of support that was needed for that. So, um, we take it very serious. Technology is wonderful, but if you don't have the support to have it working in your classroom, it doesn't mean a thing. So, and then the last thing that we've really become very good at is asset management. And we have, um, created, used, um, a program that's part of our library system. So we're kind of used to doing that. It's a resource manager. So it just ensures that we know where all our devices are, right? And when we went one-to-one, K to 5, and, you know, we were kind of used to doing 6 to 12, but K to 5 really added a whole nother level to that. And so that was really, we are able to really track that. We can see that they are being used appropriately. We are maintaining them. We're reducing the need for frequent replacements and extending the lifespan. We clean the devices. We are updating them. Uh, that also helps with, you know, our cybersecurity. So we're just really, um, I feel very fortunate that we're able to, like, keep such good track of them. And it really, I guess, coming to you with budget needs, showing you that we take care of our things and keep things up to date, I feel like that's a responsible thing that we can do to, to show that we are part of this. So what we ended up doing was, um, before this budget cycle, we just wanted to, like, really talk about and look at all the different technology that we have out there and what the life cycle is, or the lifespan of it is. And so this is a snapshot of it, but, you know, it's, it's, it's quite long. But I wanted to just show that we have a handle on this, and we have a plan to go forward. And this is the first time I was able to use this in a, uh, put it in such a visual way. Um, it helps my whole team to look at this. It helps administration and Mandy to look at this. You know, it's, it just gives us, uh, an idea of where we are and where we're going with our technology. So part of this plan is that we want a consistent and clear budget plan to move forward. So we want something that supports teaching and learning, supports reliable and sustainable hardware replacement models, um, supports a safe and secure network and learning environment for staff and students, and strives to provide equity across equitable access to resources for staff and students. So I worked with a neighboring, um, school district in how they're, um, putting their, uh, they've been putting their technology budget together. And so I'm gonna present an idea that will help us to have a sustainable budget plan for technology, because it's not going away. And when we had the pandemic and we had the, the funds that were coming through with all of the grants, we made a decision as a district that we would use that grant funding. But what happens when you use that grant funding is that that funding line goes away, right? We don't have that funding line in there. And we talk about the cliff all the time. We just don't wanna have, uh, you know, the kind of funding stress for our communities either. So what we've got here is a different kind of design that I'd like to show you. So basically, we're calling it a sustainable technology funding plan, and we've got four years here. And basically, what we do is we, you know, I've worked with Mandy and Jay on this, and I've also been working with vendors and trying to sort of look at what our four years would be. And so, um, year one, we would have an increase to the budget for 87,500. And we would have a lease for 30, uh, 3,000, 350,000. And then we would have, you know, different things coming out of that $350,000. Um, part of it would be lease purchases, and then part of it would be one-time purchases. Um, so like, the Oakland School District does this. And their number, their top number is bigger than ours, because they're a larger district. But they find that this has been very helpful for their budget. So you can see where we have, we have... So you can see where we have, we have like the high school devices going year one, then year two, we start adding in the middle school and fifth grade. And then year three, you can see that the iPads for K-5 are coming in and then the laptops for the elementary teachers. You see copiers going in on the yellow. That's a four-year lease going for that. And then you have the one-time purchases underneath. And I did the first three years of ideas of what those would be, but it gives us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, it's seven o'clock. That time marks the end of teacher conferences. If folks can wrap up their conferences, then at time of day, some teachers can get home and get rested for tomorrow. That would be great. Thank you all for coming out in time safely.
And then if you look at year five and year six, you can see that the increase to the budget goes down to zero. And yet we're still able to have those lines continue. And so that is, I can feel excited about that because I feel like that's sustainable. That, that really allows us to have what we need to do and have the technology that we need to move forward and yet it really protects our taxpayers and our communities so that we're not hitting really big increases and fluctuations with our budget. So, and then I just wanted to sort of like talk about, one of the light items on the year one is Promethean panels and that's what you're looking at right now. I wanted to sort of display that. What we found is that the panels are, the technology has become transformational. And so when you look at a panel, you don't have to worry about a projector in front of it or, you know, kids coming in front of where you're being projected. There's no calibration. We can use the software and the apps that we currently have. We have great speakers in the front and that's been an issue with a lot of our classrooms is that the sound isn't great when you have the projector above with the Apple TV. And I just feel like we have so many digital resources that this supports teaching and learning in a way that is exciting. They also is, this is a low price. Because they come in at just over thirteen hundred dollars, I was able to get some out of this budget because I had already budgeted for projectors and Apple TVs. And so a projector right now is going for seven seventy-five. And then you add a four hundred dollar Apple TV, you're almost there, right? And so what I was able to do is get six of the seventy-five inch panels is what you're looking at right now. So each of the schools have a mobile panel. And then I was able to get two for each of the elementary schools that are mounted into some classrooms. And so we have some teachers that are actually trying them out right now. There's three at the middle school and three at the high school. And so what that is allowing us to do is really gauge some excitement with this. We're doing some professional development. Teachers are trying it out. And if we're able to move forward with the plan that I'm proposing right now, I actually have, in this budget, a panel for every classroom, including interventionists for math and for literacy, art rooms, all of those teaching spaces that, you know, and, and the nice thing about this is there's no wiring. Before, when you would put in a smart board or something like that, you would have the projector in the ceiling and it would need wiring or you would have it, you know, connected to the wall. And this is a very simple setup and can go into a small space. So if you think about an intervention room, which is a smaller space, you don't have to worry about a projector and can it, you know, project appropriately and worry about all the things that are in a ceiling and that affects where it can go in the room and that sort of thing. So this allows us an opportunity to really transform a lot of our classrooms into places where the technology becomes more, less seamless, you know, seamless, you know, just sort of that it can be used. It's simple and has some great features. So, so does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm going to ask the same question I ask every time we discuss technology and that is the Apple versus Windows OS. Having worked in the collegiate space now for two years, I've noticed a lot of problems coming out of, out of Apple and that transition now into data science, Power BI, and a lot of these data application tools just don't work on the Mac operating system. Are we looking into, you know, this, as we get into a more data-centric space and more and more fields are requiring data analysis, do we, are our computers going to be able to handle those programs as they come down from the collegiate level to particularly the high school level?
So we do have some PC labs still at the high school and we have an area right off the media center now that has a small lab. And then there's also some PCs, desktops in another classroom that does some business classes. So we do have some options there. I think we always look at, at what people are looking at and doing. A lot of the things that we're finding in our, in our classrooms and even with our online curriculum is that it's less about the device and a lot of cloud-based stuff going on as well. So, but for those specific programs that you're talking about and for like the CAD programs and things like that, we do have some spaces where high school kids can get that kind of experience with those devices.
Any other questions?
So I'm trying to understand how the technology issues are triaged. When you talk about the just-in-time support, is that an anecdotal name for our technology edtech or techno?
Well, everybody sort of wears, we share the, the burden here or the responsibilities, but yes. So some of our edtechs are teaching classes in the elementary schools and they use any time that they can get free to do that just to, you know, kids are showing up at their door, they're doing, you know, that sort of thing. We've got a tech integrator that is for the elementary schools that goes to all four schools, so she has different days scheduled. And she does a lot of the teacher training and integration and those types of things. But if she's walking down the hallway and someone gives her a computer to help with, she's helping with that too, right? And then here at the middle school and at the high school, we have, our media centers are really, have become, a lot of technology happens in those areas. So it becomes a place where people can go and get help for that. And we have a tech integrator at each of the high school and the middle school for that. And then we have an IT manager. And then at the high school, who he also does district stuff to, is, I can't remember his name, you know, he's, he also does tech repair, right? We have teaching and learning. We have, you know, sort of the just-in-time support of just make this work. And then there's the actual repair stuff that's going on. And then we have all the asset management stuff that happens as well. So.
Thank you.
So I, that sounds like, are all of those people under your supervision or are they school, are they under the supervision of the principal in the school or is that all technology department personnel?
So I share supervision with the principals. And so they have like a base, so to speak. Two, like, two of the teaching edtechs at the elementary schools have two elementary schools to deal with, right? So it looks like, you know, Mount Vernon and Reed Field go together. Manchester and Wayne go together. So I work with the principals on supervision for that. They help with schedules. They do duties. I mean, they're very much school-based. And that is the same with the middle school and then also with the high school. So we're in contact with, you know, what needs to be done, you know, for all of their supervision as well.
Thanks. So how many are in your department? How many altogether, IT and edtechs and?
So district, we have the IT manager and then the, I don't, I'm not sure why I'm blanking on, but the, the person that takes care of the repairs. So those are two kind of districts people. And then I've got a tech integrator at the high school, a tech integrator at the middle school, and a tech integrator for the four elementary schools. And then I have an edtech at Mount Vernon and Wayne, and Mount Vernon and Reed Field, and an edtech at Wayne and Manchester. And then I have, yeah, and then I have also an edtech in the media center at, and they're at each of the elementary, at the high school and the middle school, but they're also doing some library management stuff going on too. So like a lot of those are like shared positions as well.
And do you, it sounds like when you said you shared supervision with the principals, you probably also talked about roles and responsibilities and things that, okay?
Yeah. Definitely. Definitely.
Do they all work with children?
Well, yeah. I mean, so when you're doing like the, the tech integrators, we go into the classroom and they're working with the teachers and the kids. If you look at, I'll, I'll just go back in my, I don't know if I can here. Well, like when I was showing the pictures of the kids working, like on, you know, the 3D printing, that's taking a class and working with classes. And then sometimes they're doing system sorts of work. So we have a lot of different online programs and we're, we're working with Clever and integrating that. There's, we haven't even talked about testing at all today. And that is a huge, huge burden on all of our systems of just like making sure that we have everything uploaded, that we have all of the programs on every single device, that the networks are working, that the schedules are made, that the makeups get done. It's huge. And we're doing that at least twice a year with NWEA and then the science goes on. And now we've added SAT testing at the high school. There's just a lot of that going on. We're also working with, you know, all of our online safety and there's just, there's just a lot. So there's, yeah. What else do I have for questions?
Oh, I, I was done. You were answering Patricia's question.
Do you have follow-up, Patricia?
No, it's, it sounds very complex.
And you probably have done this before.
Yeah.
But different screen and integrator and tech, like what are the role, different role responsibilities? That's what I'm asking.
Okay. So the integrator is responsible for a lot of the PD, right? They're actually teaching the teachers. They're also working on systems like Picatime, Powerschool. They're working with new staff coming in, making sure that all the, that they have access to all the systems that they need and can use all the equipment that we have. So that's like one part. And there's all the testing stuff that goes on. There's team teaching in classrooms. There's bringing new technology into the schools and making sure that every, everybody's able to use that stuff. The edtechs are a lot of the just-in-time support and some of them are teaching classes in the lower grades and they're doing, you know, typing with, teaching kids how to type. They're doing like the online curriculum for that. There's coding that's going on, a lot of those types of things. And they're also just helping out wherever they're needed to help out. And at the high school and the middle school, there's a lot of, like, the high school edtech is working on the media club. And so, you know, just working with kids that come into the media on podcasting and, you know, just giving them a really rich opportunity to do, you know, iMovie or whatever is sort of going on for their classrooms. They also will jump into a classroom and say, okay, the Apple TV needs to be, you know, joining the network again, they'll help with that, you know? There's, there's, there's high-yee groups. There's, you know, there's, there's just a lot going on. The librarian? Yeah. And like we do at the middle school, tech explorations. And so that's directly working with kids. It's working on Legos. It's working on 3D printing, drones. We've got drones flying around in the middle school media center. I mean, there's just, it's, it's exciting. It's, there's a lot of really exciting things going on.
Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Smith. I, I was wondering about the, the limiting to ten percent. Is, is there ever some children who get skipped over? Because there's a limit for the DT.
So we have a pretty rigorous screening process and criteria that we go through in identifying students receiving gifts, aid, and talented services. So I'm very confident in that process. Being a part of that in the last few years, it, it is pretty clear which students do are eligible and which ones are not. And if there is, you know, some that are right on the borderline, we take multiple pieces of data and get input in, in really making that decision. If there is a student that is kind of on monitor, that's just another way that we, that the DT teachers can ensure that they are, you know, constantly communicating with that child and the child's teacher to see if we do want to, you know, pick them up for full services in the following year. So pretty confident in that process. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I've got one more. How many multilingual learners do you have?
So we have, and again, the amount of services varies on what their needs are, but through, you know, laws, we have to go through the process of assessing them and determining what their needs are, which is a pretty rigorous process to do that. As of right now, the multilingual teacher is providing direct services to like around six students district-wide, but then has others kind of like also on a monitoring status type. We, the max that we've had is around 10 where she's providing services.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I just had a quick question. The, the budget didn't resonate with me. I guess I, I missed something along the way. There's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year in the budget and then, and additional eighty-seven-five.
That would be the one, the, the, how do I say that? Mandy, anything?
Do you want me to explain?
Yeah, go for it.
So basically what we're doing is it's a new system for us. Right now, we don't have anything built into the budget because we've used ester funds in the past to kind of get where we are. So it's building that budget back up. So the way the system works is it allows you to build up to having three hundred and fifty thousand dollars available every year. to having $350,000 available every year to make sure our technology is updated on a cycle. But it takes four years to get there. So the first year, we would be proposing adding 87.5 to the budget. The second year, it would be double that. The third year, triple that. The fourth year, you'd have your full amount. And then it would be sustainable moving forward at 350,000.
So what we're, what we would do in this process is we want to spend $350,000 this year. So what we would do is go out for a lease purchase with the, and banks bid on that so we can get hopefully the lowest interest rate. So that's how we're building it up. So we're only having to take a four-year lease. We're only having to order that 300, or excuse me, yeah, that $350,000. So that's kind of what we're trying to do is build up. So we finally get that $350,000 mark consistently in our budget. And like I said, that was, we, I'm going to use the school. I think it's okay to do that. We went to RSU 18, which is a bigger district than us. And in talking with their superintendent, I said, why is your budget always like 3% like clockwork? And he said, because this is what I do. And I was like, we need to do that too so that we don't have these big up and down fluctuations in our budget lines, but yet we can sustainably do what we're supposed to do, especially with things like technology. Next week, I think it's next week, right? Or the week after, I'm not sure. But we're going to bring the same kind of thing forward for facilities as well. Because then you've got that money to spend, a drone paid back, but it's a rotation. And then it's going to be like clockwork all the time. It'll be that same number every single year. And you won't see up and downs anymore. So that's why we're really excited by this and why we asked her to kind of create a plan that looked forward as what's coming due. So now rather than looking year to year, we're actually looking four years, five years, six years out as to what's coming. So that way we can say, okay, we know this is coming. And they're like laptops, that's a super expensive price tag. And normally, four years is about the life of a laptop. So we're like, we know everything runs. Think how many smart devices you've got in your homes right now. Like it's here to stay and we have to create a sustainable formula for that. And, you know, we stole it from, excuse me, another district.
I think it's great that you went and asked around to find out, I mean, that's.
Can I also add? These things are things that we would normally do lease purchases for. We would just do them all separate. So you might do the 912 MLTI lease purchase as one. And then you do, you know, the 68. And copiers were way overdue. And that's one, again, that we would do a four-year lease purchase. We're just proposing that we do them every year and bundle, kind of bundle them all together, if you would, so they're on a cycle.
Can we get a document of that that kind of explains it?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, like, it makes sense to me. Like, I can visualize it, but like not seeing what it is, it's kind of hard to be like, oh, 87, what is, what are we getting for the 87,000?
We can create something and bring that in for the next year.
Yeah, and I can make a copy of what I, you know, showed.
Yeah, I think the spreadsheet that Diane showed, one of the last ones that she showed.
If I could just see the Excel, I'd.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, actually being able to read it, I think would make sense.
Yeah, it was hard because it doesn't really like lend itself to, you know, the whole presentation. I had to split it up a little bit. But I wanted to give you the gist of it anyway so you just sort of like start to digest what it would look like. It took us a little while to like get through this too. Mandy J and I have been meeting and we're like, okay, wait a second. What does this mean? And then what does this mean? And but I, I do, I feel excited about this in a way that budget season has never done for me. I feel hopeful about it, that this could be really good for our communities and for our schools, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So $350,000 a year supports all the technology for every student, teacher, every server, everything in the whole school. Are there significant grants for this too to offset any of this or this?
So we do, and Diane can speak to this too, but for the MLTI program, we do every year get a portion of that paid for by the state. So again, that's another reason to make sure it's on a cycle because if you're not starting a new MLTI for specific grade levels, if you're always in the four-year, if you do it all at the same time, then you don't have a grade that you can submit for every year. So the idea is to try to keep it on a cycle. So every year, we have at least one grade that we can submit for that reimbursement. And I think it's 459.
Yeah, 459 per device. And so that equals if you're doing a grade level, that would be about 47,000, you know. So, I mean, that's helpful, right? We're looking at any way that we can, you know, save some money and do some good purchases and just move forward.
So like there's been some cybersecurity stuff that has come out lately. Yeah, I don't need to tell you guys how important that is that we've gotten grants for that to offset some of the costs and stuff. So we always look. I give Diane a lot of credit. She's very frugal. And if there's something out there, she goes to get it to help save.
I have one more question. So with the turnover, the rapid sort of, things become obsolete really quickly. Is there a recycling or like, what do you do with the devices when you're done?
So we were able to, like on the last refresh, we were able to actually spread some of our newer technology that we were replacing to different places in the district first, right? I take care of all of my departments, right? And who else needs something? And that's in my plan as well. And then we were able to offer some devices to teachers to buy for their personal use. And then we actually opened it up to our community and our students and our parents. And so I feel like that's a really great offering to our community to be able to share, you know, our devices that are still good and get that into the hands of our community members.
That's great. Thanks for doing that. Ultimately, do they wind up just in a, is there a way to recycle the technology once it's completely kaput?
Yes, we have a definitely, we have a recycle program for sure.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
I'm going to ask the other expensive question. What, what is our cybersecurity investments? Because I know like Baltimore got hit a couple of years ago. And it was millions of dollars to rebuild their systems when they got hit. So I just.
I'll talk a little bit about that. So we've been working on a cybersecurity plan. And we have been working with our insurance company. So we do have insurance on that. We've moved almost all of our servers to the cloud, so that's helpful. We have a plan. We are doing the two-factor authentication. We're using KnowBefore to train staff. I also send out messages, a couple per month of look out for this scam going on. And sometimes it's not even about school. It's about Facebook or it's about shopping, those types of things. So just trying to keep that in the forefront of everyone's mind. We don't have endpoint detection. And so that's, but it's so expensive. Like, how does any school afford that, right? That's one of those pieces that we're working with the state. They're doing some, we have tabletop exercises that we're going to be doing, that type of thing. And one of the things that we keep saying to Jim Chassie, who is like heading this all up at the state, is you got to get better pricing for that. You know, like, how can we afford to do that on every device? And it's like putting, you know, Sofos or, you know, something on every single computer and, you know, having that kind of encryption going on.
Have we considered doing it just for staff and administration versus?
And we do have it. We do have, we do have endpoint detection on all the central office computers and the administrator computers. But we don't have it on the teachers and we don't have it on students.
And something else you should know is we do have insurance to run MSMA for cyber attacks as well. There is, it's mandated now as part of their package.
And my other question is on the response plan. Is that going to come to the board this year? Is that?
We actually brought it in last year.
I can get it to you though.
Thank you.
I actually keep that one pinned on my bulletin board because if it ever happens, we're going to have to move quick, so.
Yeah, and we did a tabletop exercise last year. And we'll be doing one in March through the state. We did the first one through our insurance company. And that was really quite good to be able to like go through the process, yeah. And so in March, we'll be doing a second one. There's always something coming up.
Any further questions? All right, thanks Diane.
Thanks.
So I don't, I think the board may have some other questions. Leslie, you had asked for kind of a list of what the new things were. So I started that list and Dawn is going to pass it around just so that you guys can kind of see that. And what I'll be doing is as that's coming around, I'll be adding to it every week from here on going forward so that you guys can see those numbers. And then Mandy and I talked today about making sure that we're able to help you guys understand where that money goes and which articles. So that way you can kind of see the picture going forward with it as well, so. So like any of the budget things, you're looking at the, what the administrators did for their buildings. Then we put in, obviously, as it was mentioned, no. There was no change in ELL and gifted and talented, the technology. You can put 87.5 in there. We were, when I made this, I didn't go back and kind of update it. And then under professional development, please cross EAB and the cost of EAB. That is being wiped off the board. So as you guys will see going forward, a lot keeps changing very quickly with time, so. But I thought that would be great as Leslie had brought up. So again, that total at the bottom is incorrect, so, just so that you know. But I'll make sure it's correct. We'll be getting updated version next week, so.
This is helpful, yeah.
Other discussion on the budget?
Oh, I apologize if you want to put in.
So I've been doing my research and I've been watching the school board meetings. You haven't seen me here, but I've been watching them online because I want to follow and make sure I know what's going on. It's good to be informed. And there were some things that I feel like we were not talking about. First of all, why am I concerned, well, Les, I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth. This is the end of an evening, end of a lot of talking with parents, so I apologize. So I feel like I want to talk about what are we not addressing? And when I looked at the January 17th, some of the things that Jay was sharing with you guys in the slides, and there was a slide about the staff and the teachers and the ratios of the classrooms and that kind of thing. And when I look at the middle school, because this is my home, and it was talking about the class sizes. He's wanting us to have class or team sizes of 80 to 100. And I, and we're, we're working on this. We have a restructuring committee and we're going forward very intentionally under what, what Jay wants us to do and with Karen's support. And I just want us to, as things come out, I want you to be aware and question and think, how might having team sizes of 80 or 100, how might that impact our whole student body? What changes might be necessary if that is our structure? And also, questions you might want to ask, how will that affect the faculty in the building? How would that affect our staffing? Because currently, we do not have team sizes of 80 to 100. Our current team sizes, the regular ones, the ones that have core teachers, is about 62. I believe that's, that's the, that's the general sizing of the size. And when I talk about a team here in the middle school, typically a team is like Acadia, Catawba, Moose Island. And those teams are made up of core teachers. I am a Spanish teacher, I'm a world language teacher. And so we have our own team. My team is here, we are here together. And one of my former team members is here. And so when we talk about teams in the middle school, typically that we're talking about the teams that have the land names of Maine, okay? And when I, so that was a slide that I was like, okay, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we currently don't have those team sizes. And so as you are making decisions, ask questions. What, what would that do to the student body? How will that affect the faculty in the building? The next thing I wanted to know, why are we not talking about this? When I saw that slide, I realized you wouldn't talk about world languages because a team is Catawba and Moose and those teams. So then I expected to see myself and my team members represented when it talked about other staffing. Because on that slide from January 17th of this year, from that meeting, it talked about, it talked about ed techs, how many ed techs are in the district. It talked about the library. It talked about music. It talked about art. It talked about health. It talked about PE and all of the things. And they did notice, mention, they did not talk about special education because Ryan was going to have his own presentation. So that's why there was no special education teachers listed on there. But what was lacking, what I did not see or hear as I was listening to that board meeting was there was no mention of world languages. We're here. There are six world language teachers in our district. We have three in the middle school and we have three in the high school. Because I also want you to know, not only, we, our, our district has a really fine reputation because we, we are a spotlight school. And because, and one of the reasons why they continue to say we're a spotlight school is because we offer yearly, year-long world language. Okay, and if you understand what language acquisition is, you cannot acquire language in a nine-week rotation class. You are not going to acquire any level of proficiency unless you have year-long. You have it. We have that here. And starting in last, last January, we realized that we needed to adjust because the middle school has a growth mindset. And we realized that year-long is good, but we needed something in between. We needed something to introduce those sixth graders in an appropriate manner. And so we worked in the middle school building from January until May, going through all the appropriate school board policies of how we do leadership. And so we talked to teams, we went back and forth, we did lots of, a lot of talking. And we finally did decide that we could offer rotation classes in the middle school. So now, when a student comes to our building, whether they're all sixth graders, anyone new to the district, any student who is leaving a special intervention, a special service, they've been getting extra support. And when they graduate out, maybe mid-year in January or in April, they have a very comfortable, appropriate place to go. They go to rotation because we have three trimesters, we have three world languages. So you get all sixth graders, all of those groups that I just shared, go to world language for, they go to German for one trimester. They're introduced to Spanish for another trimester and French for a third trimester. And even if you are a native speaker of Spanish, you would go to these because perhaps you have never encountered German before. What a gift. Maybe you have never heard, you've never had an opportunity for French. So now you have a very developmentally appropriate, comfortable place to see what our district offers. It's good. This is best practices. Yes.
Please stop, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
Okay.
There's others on the list.
Okay, and so the reason I have concerns about how the changes could affect the student body and how it could affect the world language program is because last June, there was a surprise on our middle school. All of a sudden, we found out on June 6th, we found out in the middle school that the French program, that the French position was not going to be filled. It had been advertised for one week over Memorial Day weekend. And then we were told, nope, we're not going to do anything about it. The community responded and we did find a French teacher. And so.
All right, I'll give you a couple more minutes. Usually it's about three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. all stakeholders are a part of this conversation and all stakeholders know that what could transpire, because it's important. It's important to your children, it is important to our community, because we live in a global, global economy and world language is important. And we are in fact here, even though we were not represented on the slides. So I just want to make sure that we are all keeping everything transparent. So on June 6th, when the French teacher, when we were told, and it was, we were told that there was no, there, there was going to be no discussion. That's how we found out on June 6th. By the way, that was a few days before the end of school, when we had little time to do anything for that. Okay? June 7th, at that board meeting on June 7th is when people from the community as well as teachers came to stand and say, "This is why we think world languages are important." And in fact, like I said, we did find someone to fill those positions. And so I want to quickly just go through, why is world language important? We live in a global world. Every, we are all interconnected. We cannot simply live in English language learning. Some good things that are happening because we have middle school world language, because we have, because yesterday I met with a high school world language teachers. We had four seniors who are, sorry, three seniors who were able to successfully get the seal of biliteracy. If you're, if you would like to know more about that, you may contact me. We have two sophomores, two sophomores who will be testing for the seal of biliteracy because of year-long middle school. We have a student at Bentley who is currently, except he had the seal of biliteracy and it was accepted as college credit. This is a big deal, okay? We have five French students who are going to be attempting for that same, testing for that seal of biliteracy next week. In German, we have two, we have two juniors who earned the, juniors who, who earned the seal of biliteracy. And last year we had a senior who got one of the top medals for German in the state and she became, she came to the high school with German too, because she had it in middle school. We have a current ninth grader, one of yours. We have a current ninth grader who applied and was accepted to study in Berlin this summer because he had German in middle school. College, college acceptance, you need two years at least, but if you want to go to elite school, you need four years of a world language. We currently have a student getting a full scholarship in Germany. If you want to work in the trades, if you are a first responder, service providers, these all need a second language. Postgraduate pathways because of world language. Medical school, you can get into medical school more easily if you speak a second language. Law school, very important. Education, very important. Social working, counseling, human services, business school, world language is preferable.
Sure. If you could wrap up, I've been pretty generous.
Yep. Thank you. I just, I don't have a time, so I get, so I just wanted to let you know that I find, I want to make sure that you're aware and I thank you for your time and your patience. Sorry, Sean.
Thank you. Jane Rosner?
Greetings and thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. My name is Jane Rosner. I'm a resident of Reedfield, an educator with 21 years of experience in our schools, the past seven at the middle level. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to slow down our middle school restructuring efforts. Direct our central administrative staff to consider research and data prior to suggest, prior to supporting, suggesting, or making any changes to the middle school structure. To provide that research to our members of our community and our school staffs and to include all stakeholders, including parents, students, and all interested teachers in the restructuring conversation. As board members, I urge you to ask for a seat at this table as we consider structural changes to the schools you supervise. This is not only your purview, it is your responsibility. A responsible practitioner seeks continue, continuous improvement. We need to ask ourselves hard questions like, "How is this practice impacting our students in our community? And can we do anything better?" So I am a supporter of the idea of restructuring any school into a place that puts research and vast practices in front of students and staff. Research shows us that the best, what works best in all sorts of situations, classrooms, schools, and changing organizations included. Research also tells us that we must go slow to go fast when we desire an effective organizational change. We need to take the time to get this right and not be tied to a six-week window provided to meet the predetermined structure that has been prescribed without parent, professional staff, student, or even school board input. Research into effective organizational change states it is vital that all stakeholder voices be heard and we must have time to do that. Most educators will do anything necessary to support students as long as they understand the why. The why behind restructuring efforts was summed up as equity and certification law changes. Equity is a vague concept that must be further defined. As for the certification changes, I was informed yesterday by State Board of Education member Wendy Alt that the state legislature is again directing the state's Board of Education to reopen Chapter 115 and reassess the grade level spans, meaning that these certification changes are still fluid. These reasons must be further defined in order to assure effective problem solving. Because I wanted to understand the current best practices to support this restructuring effort, I sought out the Association of Middle Level Education's text titled, "This We Believe in Action." In flipping through this book, I was shocked. Some of the students I worked with are pictured in the book. I learned that our district's own Miranda Coe Community Middle School was recognized nationally as a model for everyone else, one of only eight schools nationally to be recognized as such. I figured if I didn't know this information, then most of our community probably doesn't either. I have copies of the book cover page, copyright date, and forward to provide you if you would like. I know that what we're doing at the middle school is confusing if you haven't sat down and wrapped your head and heart around the work. I spent 14 years of high school wondering what those crazy middle school educators were doing. And then seven years ago, I joined their ranks. The crazy middle school educators are working hard in a model supported by research, meeting the needs of most of our kids, more of them than I ever felt I reached while I was a high school educator. Can we do anything better? Probably. But being recognized as one of the top eight schools in the country by the nation's only association for middle level education, that's pretty darn cool. I urge you to use this information to not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Please direct our district administration to slow down our middle school restructuring efforts, preferably delaying them for one or even two years as certification is sorted out at the state level. To consider research to support any changes to the middle school structure and to share that research with members of our community and staff. Please direct our district staff to define the problem, the why, before allowing the community to seek the how. Per district's policy, ABB, GBB, we must provide for meaningful professional staff input in a spirit of cooperation with a clear focus on student learning. This means it's time to invite all of our stakeholders to this discussion so that our community can work together to get this right for our students. As a board, it is your responsibility to be part of this conversation and to make sure that these restructuring efforts go well for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody online? Thank you all for coming tonight. Um, next on the agenda, just to give you the big notes, is making motion for executive session.
I move, I move to go into executive session to consider negotiations between the RSU 38 over director, the RSU 38 administrator, and the RDS, and the Miranda Coe Area School Staff Association, pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Section 405, Subsection B, Subsection C, Subsection E.
Second.
I've been moved to the second discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous? All right.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Boom. Meeting over.
Okay.